Okay, if I can have everybody's attention. This is a very special evening. We really appreciate everybody coming out. We are here to swear in our two new, but already seasoned council members, Gary Jablonsky and Bob Hartman. And so I am, we're gonna start off with Gary and then we'll have Bob. But I just wanted to say before we get into that, that, you know, it's just awesome that the interaction that takes place through an election, it's a ton of work. And I don't need to tell either one of these guys that. They've all been through it. And I know a lot of you that are here go through it and help out and get the word out. But it's a great opportunity for us as council members to renew those relationships and to get a better understanding of what the residents want. So I appreciate all that you have done and all that you have done to make this happen. Congratulations to both of you. And Gary, let's start with you if we can swear you in.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming. This is my son Kyle. He's also my good luck charm. He's sworn man before and he gets to do it again. So Kyle, if you'll go ahead, start with the oath and speak into the mic.
I do solemnly swear. Sorry.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution government and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
And the charter of the town of Southwest Ranches.
And the charter of the great town of Southwest Ranches.
And will protect the rural residential character of the town.
And will protect the rural residential character of the town.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And the charter of the town of Southwest Ranches.
And the charter of the town of Southwest Ranches.
And that I will, I will well and faithfully perform the duties of a council member.
And that I will, will and well, and faithfully perform the duties of council member.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
Upon which I am about, now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. I'll be very brief. Thank you all for coming. Just want to say a couple of things. I had it pretty easy, this election. Bob didn't. Bob had to really work his, really work hard and I'd, you know, I helped him as best I could. And we had a lot of fun and we got through it and we, and I think the town is better off for it. I would like to say one thing, though. I am wearing a Florida Gator tie. I have worn this on two other occasions, being sworn in, so this is my lucky tie. And I'm probably gonna send it up to the football team so that they could use it because I think they, I think they need it. I think they need it next year. But at any rate, it's wonderful to be here, to be sworn in and to go through the process. It's probably the most rewarding job I've ever had, ever had in my life. And I'm very proud to be a part of it, of the whole town. And I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. Bob, I turn it over to you.
Just a quick introduction. This is my, over here, Michael.
Over here.
My son-in-law, Michael, bent. You ready? Yes, I am.
I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution.
That I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And government of the United States.
And government of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
And the charter of the town of Southwest Ranches.
And the charter of the town of Southwest Ranches.
And I will protect the rural residential character of the town.
I will protect the rural residential character of the town.
That I'm duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And the charter of the town of Southwest Ranches.
And the charter of the town of Southwest Ranches.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
Of council member.
Of council member.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
Well done. Well done.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, folks. First, I want to thank my family. They rehearsed it. Nancy, Jessica, Dawn, and Michael, for all their support throughout the campaign. I mean, everybody says Bob, Bob, Bob. It's not Bob, Bob, Bob. It is the family. It is the friends. It is all the people that show up to help out. If it was just Bob, I don't think I'd be here today. Nancy was at my side at the farmer's market. It was hot. She was, we were all hot. She continued at the farmer's market when I went off to the polls, so she was up there. Vote for Bob, please. I need him out of the house. But Dawn and Michael, Jessica, everybody went to hand where they could and it's greatly appreciated. Dawn and Michael both, Dawn and Jess both grew up in town. We moved into our house the week before Dawn was born. And she lived there until Michael swept her off her feet. And they moved to First Plantation and now Cooper City. Jess was born here and this is the only place she's ever lived. Michael grew up in Belluno, Italy, near Venice. So we are an interesting family when it comes to where we're all from. I want to call out my son-in-law, Michael, for an exceptional personal achievement. Michael, please stand. Michael joined our family eight years ago when he married our daughter Dawn. Since then, he's become my close friend and a fine husband to Dawn. He's been dashing up the corporate ladder with continuing success and has a new superlative that he can add to accomplishments, his accomplishments, as an FIU Business School grad. In three weeks, he's graduating summa cum laude, which 2'9" or, 3'9", 2'9", 3'9" or above. I had it too, but I don't even remember. It's a long ago. But that's not to take away from him. He has gotten, what, 1B, 2Bs? Two. So, all by itself, I mean. He's a brilliant guy. I was just about to say, in addition to that accomplishment, in about three weeks, Dawn, why don't you stand up next to Michael? They'll become first-time parents. So for these reasons, I wanted to honor the two of them today. I also wanted to recognize our wonderful community for re-electing me to serve on this council. Each of us on the council started as a volunteer and we continue to work together well as we serve our, and protect our rural lifestyle. We are very different than most other municipalities in Broward County. I mean, there's a lot of people that run for office for various reasons, but we're all volunteers. You can't say that of very many, any municipalities in Broward County. So something we ought to be very proud of. Our elected leaders come from the ranks within and I think we've all known each other 10 years or more. So it's with great pride I serve with these guys because I know where they stand. We all came up the same way and, you know, we have an understanding because we all understand the community. We understand the values. It's a unique group that I'm honored to serve with for the next four years. At this point, I also want to thank the team of 30-plus volunteers that helped out. If you helped in any way, please raise your hand. Just to give an idea who's in the room. Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, I was endorsed by the entire council and thank you, friends, for coming out today and thank you for all your help. The mayor said keep it short.
Since when do you listen to the mayor?
Well, I figured this would be special. So with that said, again, I want to thank everybody for your help and your support and I really look forward to the next four years, serving with the council and serving the community, most of all. Thank you, folks. Sure. Where do you want me to stand? Are you? Oh, okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, David. Takes the community. Excellent.
That straightens time. Putting in all that trouble.
Thank you for all your support, Susan. All right. Now if the council come up and join us real quick, we'll get one last photo for the night. Gary, that's you, too. Mr. Mayor. That's all right.
All right. So we will take about an eight-minute break and then we will start the council meeting. All right. Call this meeting of the Town Council of Southwest Ranches to order. If we can please call the roll. Or perhaps we'll start with the Volunteer Fire Department Board of Directors meeting.
Capital idea.
Thank you, David.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Chair Jablonsky.
Here.
Board Member Albritton.
Here.
Board Member Hartman.
Here.
Board Member Kaczynski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good.
I mean, the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that the right one? Nope. I actually don't have the agenda for that meeting in front of me. Sure, Mayor, so.
She'll bring it to you.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna bring it to you.
I got it. Okay. Thank you, Keith. All right. So let's, we have the approval of the minutes from June 23rd. Do I have a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any additions, corrections to the minutes from the count, from the board? Seeing none. Any additions, corrections from the public? Seeing none. If you can please call the roll.
Board Member Albritton.
Yes.
Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Kaczynski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Jablonsky.
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Do we have any committee reports this evening? Seeing none. Do we have any officer reports this evening? Seeing none. We do have some new business and that is the adoption of the Town Employee Manual.
Yeah, Mayor, just to be brief. Although the Volunteer Fire Department's always been governed under the rules and regulations of the town, we noticed recently that they never had officially adopted the town's employment manual. And as they keep growing, it's important to ensure that the town's employment manual overlaps and oversees the way they conduct their affairs as well. So we're recommending that your board adopt the Town of Southwest Ranches Employment Manual to govern the Volunteer Fire Department as well.
Great. Thank you, Keith. Do I have a motion for this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. Is there any public discussion on this item? Seeing none. If we can please call the roll.
Board Member Albritton.
Yes.
Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Kaczynski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Jablonsky.
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Very good. All right. Thank you.
Let's go home.
So this means adjourned.
Let's go home.
All right. So let's do this again. Call to order the meeting of the Town Council of Southwest Ranches. If we can please call the roll.
Certainly, Mayor. Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky.
Here.
Councilmember Albritton.
Present.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. As you'll notice, Andy Burns, our town administrator, is not here this evening and that's due to the fact that his father-in-law, Mitchell Rapkin, passed away in the last week. And so I want to just take a moment of silence to recognize, recognize that loss. So if you'll please join me in a moment of silence. Great. Thank you very much. All right. The next item on our agenda is every year, the designation of the vice mayor moves around to the different council members. And we normally have a kind of a set rotation for it. Of course, it's up to the council to choose the next. But in this particular case, we have two individuals that were elected two years ago. And so there's really no logic or any sort of methodology to choose between the two of them and to stop an all-out brawl this evening. No, I'm just teasing. I'm just teasing. But our current vice mayor came up with an interesting idea, which I'm frankly a little leery about because he came up with an idea about 10 years ago and I ended up on the short end of the stick of that one. But he's not involved in this one, so I think this is, this one's good. No, I'm just teasing him. But, but so he brought a deck of cards this evening and so what we propose.
Can I make a nomination? Or is that just out of order?
Well, you can. Actually, that is in order if you would like to do that.
I would like to nominate Jim Albritton as vice mayor for the next year.
Jim or the deck of cards?
You're not waiting on a second for me, are you?
Just kidding.
I'm not here in a second. Not that we don't. I think we just want to have a little bit of fun. That's all.
All right. Let's have fun.
All right. All right. So we've got, we've got a deck of cards. And what we're gonna do is.
They've been shuffled.
They've been shuffled.
Twice.
Twice. And so what we're gonna do is we're gonna cut the deck. Let each of you cut the deck. Highest card wins. And the winner gets to, wait a minute. Wait a minute.
The winner gets the option.
To choose.
Gets the, yeah, gets the option to either choose or defer.
If they both agree to it.
Okay.
All right.
Go for it.
All right. Here we go.
If I defer, do I get to kick off in the second half?
I get to put it south field.
Well, I want the wind on my back, that's for sure.
Take one right off the top. All right. All right. What do we got? Oh, my goodness. We've got, what do we got over here?
What did he have?
He's got the two of hearts over there. It's gonna be tough to, oh, my goodness.
I got a one. I got a one.
Well, it is your, your option to choose or defer.
You owe me one, David. It's me. I'll take it. Okay? I'll take it.
All right.
On that, on that note, I will, I will make a motion to nominate Jim Albrit, Councilman Albritton, as the new vice mayor.
Second.
Very good. Very good.
Got to use that, now, vice mayor.
Vice mayor.
Any, any discussion on that item?
I thought we did already.
Done. And I'm afraid to do this, but any public discussion on this item?
Mayor, if you don't mind, we need to read the reso into the record.
Okay.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, appointing Councilmember Jim Albritton as the new vice mayor of the Town of Southwest Ranches and providing an effective date.
Nothing in there about cutting the cards, huh?
All right. And let's do the first and the second again, I think.
I make the motion to nominate.
And the second. Okay. So we're good on that. All right. And no further comment. If we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Hartman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky.
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Motion passed.
That's it, Gary. Last time.
Last time? All right. Public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening?
Mayor, we have two public comment tonight. One is Noel Hollingsworth and Jason Halberg.
Good evening. Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. It's the time of year for the orphan projects list, which continues to grow and not be undone in any way major form. The first one is the US Army Corps of Engineers has drawn up and approved the plan for pump station and stormwater retention area on the north side of the C-11 canal. All the public hearings required by law have been held. And two multipurpose equestrian bridges will be built across the C-11 when it is completed. One east of the pump and one west of the pump. The problem is that it was supposed to start in the spring of 2022. It has not started and flooding in our town continues because we are the basin overflow area for Pembroke Pines in Weston. Town needs to find out why it was delayed and when the start date for the project will begin. So therefore, we will know when an end will take place. Number two. When the Weston Road Bridge over the C-11 is rebuilt, which is scheduled for 2040 by Broward County, have them include in the bridge a multipurpose pedestrian equestrian crossing within the bridge similar to the one within the bridge at approximately Hancock Road. Work with Broward County MPO to place the crossing in the construction phase. Work with the Weston Commission and/or Broward County Commission to realign the pavement striping over the bridge on Bonaventure Boulevard. This will provide a pedestrian equestrian trail safely over the C-11 at Bonaventure. Since several members of the council tried again this year, since there was a new staff and everything over there and new elected officials, and they were unable to convince the engineer that there is a change that is necessary. We need to renew our efforts with Broward County to overrule the Weston City Commission and convince them to realign the road striping in Weston or to just realign our striping within our town, since the bridge is 100% within our town. It is necessary as a safety measure so the equestrians can cross the bridge because several have been thrown over the years while crossing the bridge because people have honked their horns or come too close to the horses. A master drainage plan for the west side of Southwest Ranches. East side already has a plan. We have a $250,000 grant for a master drainage plan, but the vendor has not revealed anything to the infrastructure and drainage board or the public as to what they're doing or the design that they're doing. Have the town reinstall the equestrian area signs at the entranceway to the town that were taken down when Griffin Road was whitened. May I continue?
Yes.
We are missing three blinking caution lights at trail entranceway on Griffin Road by the C-11 canal. One at 193rd, one at the existing dam, and one at 209 Avenue. Convince Broward County that they are needed for safety's reason and if not, have the town pay for having them installed. Weston Road and Bonaventure Boulevard bridges over the C-11 canal have pedestrian crossing lights. A high button for the equestrians need to be placed on the poles of the other crossings within our town. Have Broward County add the high button, like the one at Volunteer Road, on all the lights, crossing lights in Southwest Ranches for the safety of the equestrian community. A linear park and equestrian trail on Sterling Road, which is in the comprehensive plan and scheduled to be built in 2025. Get the parks and infrastructure boards to work together to design the park and converting one side of the road into a park. Convince the Davie Town Council and local Davie HOAs to support the plan within the town of Davie. The last one has been discussed before and I still believe it needs to be done within our town. An area for farm animals is something that is basic to our town's identity and as such, there should be a designated area within each new lot for shelter and turnout area for large farm animals. Horses are the major visible and economic reason that allows our residents to have other types of farm animals. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. The next individual for public comment?
Jason Halberg, Thoroughbred Lane. I'll make mine a little more brief. First of all, I wanted to congratulate Bob and Gary on your reelections. And I think that the community has spoken. It's to me undeniably clear that through this process, you are the best candidates and that you will truly represent the community's voice on the council. It is equally clear that you both possess two critical qualities for this role. First, that you will stop at nothing to preserve our rural lifestyle. And second, you will always act with the utmost honesty and integrity. Let me say it again. The residents of this town have selected each of you for your endless passion for preserving our rural way of life. And second, that you will hold yourselves and those around you to the highest standards of integrity. Next month, one of your roles as council will be to appoint volunteers from within our town to serve on advisory boards. When making your selection, I would like to just remind you of these same two important attributes. That the individual you select will always preserve our rural lifestyle and that the individual you select will represent the community with honesty and integrity. And once again, I'm grateful for everything that you all have done for our community and congratulations on your reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Mayor, we have one last speaker that was a late submission. Is it, is you're okay with it?
Yes.
Mary Ann Allen.
Yep. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and mayor. If you'll just give me a few extra moments, I think you'll all want to hear what I have to say. All right. My glass is broke tonight, so. All right. I want this to go on record, that this council. so. All right. I want this to go on record, that this council is the most transparent council that we've had, and we've had a lot of predecessors that we've been disappointed in. Our mayor, Steve Bright Cruz, had the integrity and courage to allow the residents to bring to the council their concerns regarding issues with the permitting process. Instead of trying to sweep this under the carpet, this mayor and council allowed both sides of the issue adequate time to voice their concerns. Never let it be said that they are hiding anything. They are the honest, hardworking, and on our behalf have proven their integrity to the residents of this town. Let this go on record on their behalf. Now, please realize that our code and engineering staff are desperately trying to hire additional staff. In the last few years, Southwest Ranches has had an explosion of development. It has overwhelmed our council, staff, attorney, and town. We are playing catch-up to all the negative side effects of this overdevelopment. The town council and administrator should be complimented on how hard they work. In the last six weeks regarding the permit issues, they have responded immediately to all our concerns. It is because of the short staffing and overwhelming code violations that the process falls short and mistakes are made. Perhaps we should slow down our permit process till engineering can catch up and hire more help so that sites can be adequately monitored. These suggestions come from a committee of residents for our council to consider. Here are some items to help mitigate fill issues. No fill or construction work on weekends or holidays. Our residents need a break from the constant hammering, sawing, and construction work. At least on weekends, let them have some peace and quiet. Hire permit fees for Level 3 permits with a sliding scale based on cubic yards. The more trucks, the more wear and tear on our roadways. They should pay, not taxpayers. More significant penalties to deter violators. Currently, there is only a double permit fee of $300, so we can go from eight truckloads to 500 with a minimum penalty. It's not sufficient to deter violators. Any violations that are eight, 18-yard trucks or more must be required to remove the fill. The second violation should be double the fine. The third violation should be triple the fine. Finally, please consider creating a temporary volunteer, two seconds, temporary volunteer advisory committee on how to deal with permit violations and for deterrence. We can study other cities to see how they deal with this issue and compare and improve our own. This will help us to come up with solutions to help the town tackle the ongoing violations. And only one more minute. I was at the last special magistrate hearing. The entire docket was full of violations, even building structures without a permit. No one respects our permit application process. How do we make our residents aware of our rules? Also, permit signs must be placed on every project where neighbors can see. These suggestions come from your residents. As a relatively young town, we have lots of room for improvement. I want to thank our mayor and council members for the integrity they have shown us. I also want to congratulate Councilman Bob Hartman on his reelection. It is Bob's history of integrity, hard work, and honesty that won him a resounding victory. This is our best council in years, and we hope they continue to dedicate their efforts to the benefit of Southwest Ranches. We are the envy of every other community. Please keep it rural. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Okay. All right. Are there any board reports this evening?
Good evening, council, Vice Mayor, Councilman. George Morris, on behalf of the Drainage Board. Just the other week, we met, and we had a discussion about Green Meadows Dykes Road Project, which is underway. It's already started, the installation of the pipes. There was some issue with some deep pockets of muck, so we're dealing with that with regards to hauling it away somewhere local. We also had a discussion on the slopes of the swales. We pretty much came to the conclusion that we're going to stick to a 12%, 12.5% slope and stay away from the deep V-s, notch swales, if you want to call it that. We also had a discussion on TIS Door policies. We made some revisions to the policies with respect to notification, et cetera, and we voted to forward those changes to council. Also, a lot of suggestions and help and input was provided to us by Noel Hollingsworth, so thank you, Noel, for all your input. We always appreciate that. We also discussed, we had, the town has a detail. It's basically a driveway and swale exhibit for residential lots. It's provided to the town residents. It's sometimes published in the newsletter. It's something to pay attention to with regards to the swales, the setbacks and easements, et cetera. It's also attached to blueprints, and we pretty much looked at that, and we're going to stick with those pipes and coverts and setbacks and swales and slopes that are indicated on there. So that's something very important. We also had a discussion, the courtesy notices for fill. It's something that we definitely want to do moving forward. When a fill applicant comes in, submits a fill application, we want to notify the adjacent lots that are affected, potentially affected, or, you know, just to notify the people so everybody's aware. So that's one positive thing that we've come up with to move forward to try and work with the fill situation that's out there that's challenging. So that's it for me with regards to my board report. I would like to talk a little bit on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Astronaut Foundation. Again, as I mentioned last time that I was up here, we have a Tree of Life in the back of the room, very important for fundraising, et cetera. It's a permanent fixture, part of this room. We offer leaves over there for $100, a simple $100. You can get your name up there. We also have a limited amount of egg corns that will go with that tree for $500. There's also branches that are even bigger. There's actually one branch that's up there for $750, and there's other rocks that can be added to that mosaic back there for $1,000. So it's something that we're looking towards the public. If they can, somebody wants to memorialize somebody or put their name up there or, you know, honor a special event, that would be great. We also have the Soul Flow Chili Fest that's coming up, which is a car show as well on Saturday, December 10. It's a great event. I offer everybody to come out there. I know I see a lot of councilmen out there. It's a great day, great car show. As well as we have the carnival coming up relatively soon. It's not that far away. It's going to be in January 12. It's going to start on a Thursday. It's going to end on Monday, January 16 on Martin Luther King Day. It's over the holiday weekend, so there'll be plenty of time to come out there. Obviously, that's located in the corner of Griffin and Dykes Road. One positive thing today, as we all know, we have an entrance into the park there. There's three telephone poles. Everybody's probably seen that. Today, a local contractor volunteered to install some cables across those poles to be able to hang some banners for whether it's the farmer's market, or it's the carnival, or any other events in the future. So that was something that a local contractor donated the time and effort to install those cables. And there was a sign that was hung up there for the carnival. Maybe you'll drive by and see it. It was actually a sign from last year. So the date is a little bit off, but for the most part, you know, it's something that we were testing out those cables to see how it would work. And so it's something positive for the community, something that will be, everybody driving over it will be able to see. Other than that, that's it. Thank you for your time. Have a great night.
Thank you, George.
Just have a question.
Yeah, yeah, George.
Is the farmer's market closed the weekend of the carnival?
It will be closed the weekend of the carnival. Yes. Yes, absolutely. Go ahead.
I'm assuming that Andy has let them know, and they're...
It's, if you look at your calendar, I believe it was removed from that.
Okay.
But it will not be scheduled for that weekend. Something different that we're going to try and have at the carnival this year is a tent with vendors, and maybe we can set up some sort of farmer's market or something. We're kind of experimenting with different things for fundraising, et cetera. So we're going to be expanding the carnival a little bit with some additional rides, you know, nothing too crazy, but, and try, you know, some vendor tents or something like that, just to try and make a little more country, because it is a country fair, and we're trying to make it as country as possible, trying to look into the animals and horses, and we're trying some different, some things. So, you know, every year, we're going to grow and expand, you know, and just try and work within our five-acre lot and do the best we can to raise as much money as we can for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other board reports? Seeing none. Councilmember comments?
Yeah, I'll go. Mayor, if I may. I have quite a few items here to talk about, and I figure this, now's a good time to start bringing them on. First, let me get just some general announcements out of the way, but I'd like to start off with, I know Andy's probably watching us on YouTube. You know, Andy, our thoughts and prayers are with you. I just want you to know that. And just getting sworn in without you present, which wasn't quite the same as it was the last, the last couple of times. So just want you to know that, how appreciated you are. Just some general information. I want to, probably going to say this every, to every meeting. Waste management is only going to dump the carts that are approved. We still have a tremendous quantity of the old people, old carts, gray carts, metal cans. The people still think, the residents still think are going to get dumped, and they're not, and they're getting sat by the wayside. And they're out there for weeks so far. So everybody needs to understand, and it's just a reminder, not placing blame on anybody or anything, just want to remind everybody. As George mentioned, the car show and Chili Fest is going to be on the 10th of December. The Sunshine Ranches HOA Holiday Inn Dinner at the Park is going, at Equestrian Park, is going to be on the 11th of December. Town Hall is going to be closed Thursday and Friday next week for the Thanksgiving holiday. And Town Hall will also be closed, just being preemptive on this, Friday, the 23rd, and Monday, the 26th of December. That'll be the, the day before Christmas Eve and the day after Christmas. The town council is going to have our December meeting on the 8th of December. We, and if you want to sign up for the Holiday Lights Contest, you need to submit your entry, entry form, which is available online and in the newsletter by the 2nd of December. Judging starts, fill mail soon, if I can't read. The 6th. Sorry, the 6th. Okay. There's no Broward County property appraiser in the month of December. They will resume in January. And the Flowmobile is still MIA. It's somewhere on the West Coast with all the other Flowmobiles, helping all those folks out there that really got hit hard by the hurricane. Now, I'd like to get into three things that I think are really relevant at this moment and important. And my wingman just left, so. Fortunately, I have another thing without him that I can use. One of the things that's come up here lately is regarding fill. And what I'd like to do with the council's consent is I'd like we to formulate an ordinance regarding fill that would include, basically, I don't want to take anything off the table, and I would like to have a community, not a community, I'd like to have it, get going back to the Drainage Committee in January, which is when they next meet, with the instructions that to consider all possibilities regarding fill, whether it's only certain days it's allowed, certain days not allowed, penalties, things that, whatever it is. Here the ideas all out. Make a list on, think of, make some recommendations. Then, once that's completed, I'd like to see us have a workshop prior to a meeting at like 6:30. Nothing, you know, too, too long, and get to the point. And then I'd like to see us codify into an ordinance our fill policies. Because right now, what we have is policies. We don't have ordinances. And let me give you an example. And Julio, he has to make a lot of decisions on his own, on his own, where I think some of those decisions should be made by us. And I'll give you an example. On 178, there was a newly purchased property, and all of a sudden, about 15, 20 loads of fill showed up at this property. No wetland determination, no, nothing, I mean, nothing was done, just fill showed up. They were sighted, and the fill has to be removed. Well, the fill was removed down to a Level 1, but I didn't know that. That was a decision made by Julio. And so, and right or wrong, it's not, it wasn't a bad decision, wasn't a good, you know, it was just a decision made. So I go by, and I still see piles of fill there, and I call up Andy and say, when are they coming to get it? And he said, they were there this morning getting it. And I said, no, it's still there. And then, that's when the whole, that's when the whole thing unraveled. And what I'd like to do is put in, just kind of set in stone, exactly what we're willing to live with and not live with in an ordinance. And this will take, this actually will help Julio and code enforcement, because it gives them a rigid set of guidelines regarding fill to be able to undo or, you know, change things around. And I'd like to, you know, council to weigh in on this as we go along. I think we're at that moment now where the residents recognize what we've been seeing for years, but they're recognizing it now up close and personal, that is becoming a nightmare out here, especially with new residents moving in who have no idea that there is a process that they have to go through. And so I would like to codify that and get that into an ordinance. And go through the, but I want to go through the full transparency, where we hear from the public, we have a workshop with the Drainage Committee, and we have, and then we hear from the public with us at a workshop, and then we figure out what we're going to do after that, and then give it to Keith to put into an ordinance. So that, that's, that's one item that I have, that I would like to do. Is everybody okay with that?
Gary, in support of that, the special magistrate meetings are turning into fill meetings.
Yeah.
There's so many violations now on fill. We need to do something differently.
Yeah. So that's the whole purpose behind this. It's just, it's just like this endless stream of dirt that's coming in.
Right.
And we don't know if it's, where it's going, how it's getting there. The Drainage Committee came up with the idea of sending in the letter to the residents that are immediately around it. That's a great, you know, first start, and it may cut down on probably 90% of the phone calls that, like I get, you know, something like that. Everybody understands. It may raise more phone calls also, right? It may go in the other direction. But it's a start, and I think we really need to focus on that. The next, the next item I have that is, it deals with speeding. It is probably the single largest complaint I see in the entire town, if you have to go end to end, is speeding. And we recently got, and I got this idea while I was walking up and down 178 Boulevard, which you get a lot of ideas, and people give you a lot of opinions while you're walking in, you know, stuff like that. And one of the things was, we had one of the radar trailers, the new ones, put out. And as I'm walking up and down, I'm watching everybody as they approach the trailer, and they're approaching it, and it's at the midpoint, it's at where the barn is. So they're, and it's, and it's on, going northbound. And you see them moving at a pretty good clip, coming from where I live at the back end. And as soon as the radar starts flashing, you see the brake light hits. Okay, so we know it's working. It's a, it's passive thing. It's a reminder that people are tapping their brakes to slow down. Well, I opened up the idea book on this one, okay? And I would like to see us, and I'd like your, y'all's opinion, because this isn't just me, to put in permanent radar speed signs throughout the town.
You're here.
I've got Andy investigating it right now. We have the money. We, I've budgeted $120,000 for across town for 12 more, non-taxpayer money. This would come out of the forfeiture, can I get it right, forfeiture fund. We have the money in there to do it, and we can install them and put them in permanently. And we still have the mobile carts, or if the permanent ones don't work out, we can get more of the mobile carts. The $120,000 would cover four, four permanent locations in Sunshine Ranches, four permanent locations in Green Meadows, Deems Ranches area, two Enrolling Oaks, and four out in Country Estates. And we may decide that we need more than that. We may need two more in Country Estates, because it's larger. We may need two more in, or one more in Sunshine Ranches. It's fluid. We can go over that. We do have the funds to go over that. But I think this would really, really help slow down the speeding, because it just makes everybody conscious. You know, the people that are in a hurry, and they're going to go 40 miles an hour... go 40 miles an hour, and they're trying to get to the doctors, they're not gonna slow down. But the person that's just, you know, doing their normal drive, you know, it's a reminder to slow down, and it works. And I'd, and I'd like to see us, um, move forward with that and bring back something, you know, to that. Uh, the ones that'll be, be pole mounted, the permanent stationary ones, will be running off of solar power, so that wouldn't need, uh, necessarily need, uh, FPNL. Uh, the maintenance would probably be minimal, uh, you know, other than somebody hitting it or, or, you know, something malicious going on, you know, for something like that. And I'd like to, um, move forward with that, uh, on the radar stations, and I, I think we just need to, you know, nod our heads and let Russell know, he's, Russell is a, is well, well, well aware of it, as is Andy, of what we're trying to do here. So, if you guys, uh, have any disagreement to that, you know, now would be a good time to, to put it out.
I like the idea. There's actually one on the 116th over in Cooper City, that every time I go to my, my daughter's house, I'm reminded to slow down. Their speed limit is 25, if you're above 25, it flashes. If you're above 30, it tells you to slow down. If you're below the radar, you're, nothing comes up. The only thing, I, I like the idea, Gary, I think it's a great idea, and I heard somebody else talking about it, and I'm all for it. I'm just worried we don't finish the LPR project. At the last meeting, before the last meeting, I found out that we don't have the coverage of the entire town. We have the majority of the town, but due to the amount of money that we allocated, they did what they could and got the most out of it. I'd like to see that project finished as well.
Yeah.
I mean, I think both are important to, to the town.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. If we need to add a couple more cameras.
Right.
We do have the funds for that.
Well, I, I had asked Russell to come up with an estimate on that when we discussed it, it was either the last or the prior meeting.
Yeah.
I haven't looped back with him and Andy on it yet. If we can do them both, fantastic.
Yeah, I, we, we do have, we do have enough money to do both. This is, this is only actually 20% of the forfeiture.
Good.
The, the, the 120,000.
Good.
That's, this is all, this is non-taxpayer dollars.
Right.
So, I'm trying to utilize it across the town to the benefit of all our residents and nas, non-residents as they go through. And let me tell you, when, the, the radar cart, when in the middle of the night, when you're, if you're going one, one mile over that, it is bright. It is very bright.
Yeah.
And it runs off of solar power. And, uh, the other night, I was, at 1:00 in the morning, I was trying to take pictures of the, the moonshot, and, uh, I couldn't, was able with my lens to zero in, I'm a mile away, I was able to zero in on the, uh, cart, when a car went by as it lit up. So, it, it's, it's quite bright, and it quite, and it's quite effective, cause you can just see everybody tapping their brake lights, you know, to slow down. So, I think that would help in our speeding. It's just, it doesn't, it's not gonna be a cure-all, it, but it's gonna be, uh, you know, one more piece of the puzzle that'll fit, that'll help. So, I, I'm looking for everybody's support to move in that direction.
Gary, I got a quick question, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
On the permanent signs in the residential RE, uh, areas, whether it's all one acres, houses across the streets from each other, where do you put the sign? You can't put it in somebody's front yard. Where would you mount a sign like that in Green Meadows, for example? I know you could do it on 166, because we have a huge easement on the west side, but not on 164th or 163rd, you'd end up putting it in somebody's front yard. I don't know if that would go over good.
I don't, I don't have an answer to, to that question right now.
Right.
So, I don't wanna give you, you know, false information. I know we have right-ofways, and I know we have, I think that's probably one of the details that we need to work out.
Okay.
And, and as the plan progresses. Like on 166, which is your, your street.
Yeah.
That's a major thoroughfare, you've got the wide, wide side.
Yeah, that's huge, right.
And you can put them on both, both ways.
Yes.
And I have it in, uh, in Rolling Oaks on 178th, we've got 100-foot right-ofway. And so, we've got plenty of room. And of course, you wanna put it in an advantageous area, like in, in Rolling Oaks, I'm gonna use that as an example, uh, at the midpoint, because most people who come in and just turn in in the first one or two streets, they're not the speeders, they're already home. It's the people going all the way down to the back, or all the way back up to the front, they're the ones that are building up speed and don't even realize it, you know.
Right.
That it comes through. And then, in case of, uh, 195th, 196th, um, you know, people at the back end, by the time they get to the front end, you know.
Yes.
And what I would say to this is, let the council member and their HOA and community decide where to put them, along with our, uh, traffic people who can help us, you know, do that. I, it, it's not something I wanna pick.
Mm-hmm.
It'd be something that you guys should pick in your areas, cause you know, you know your area better than, better than anybody else is gonna know it. And, you know, and if we need, if, you know, uh, we need four in one area and six in another, not opposed to that, whatever, whatever, whatever makes it work. They're not, they're not that expensive. They're like $10,000 each or less. And I think we could add more if we wanted to. I picked four, four and four, and then two for Rolling Oaks, just to make it, you know, somewhat even, but it may be six, eight, two, or, you know, something to that effect. So, I'd like to move forward to that, you know, once we get the, uh, Andy gets back and we get the LPRs squared away, and we figure out where we're going with that.
Yeah. Can I just, quick, quick comment on that topic?
Yeah.
Um, I, I think it's a great idea. I, I definitely support the idea. Um, my, my thought, and it kinda, kinda, piggyback, piggybacking on, on what Jim was saying, I think that we do need to take some time to really figure out the right places. And, and one of my concerns is, I much prefer these types of projects to go through the budget process, so that it's published, and it's there with, with all the other projects that are kind of up against it. I mean, I think this is a great idea, I'm sure it's gonna get the money. But, I'm, I'm always a little leery about projects of this size that don't go through the budget process, are not published out to the residents, and, um, that doesn't get the same, uh, visibility that others. And we're only, we're only like three or four months. I, I think it's gonna take us a couple of months to get us to, to understand where the locations are and the number that we need anyway.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if you would be opposed to, you know, including this in, as, as, as one of the items in, in our budget process.
Yeah, I, I, I absolutely, I don't have a problem with that, I just think.
Awesome.
I just think we should use the, the.
So do I.
Non-taxpayer money to pay for.
Yeah.
But the, but, but the process itself, yeah, I'm all for doing that, it's full transparency.
Perfect.
You know, on something like that. It's gonna take some time, I mean.
It is.
This might, this might not come to fruition for another eight, eight to 10 months.
Yeah.
Or longer.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, on something like that. But yeah, we want full transparency on all of this, you know, at all times, you know? And that's why I say, you guys, you guys in your districts, pick, pick where, where they should go, how they should go, go through the process, and decide if we need two here, four here, three here, 10, you know, whatever it is.
I think it's a good idea, we get community input, but I'd really want some help from Rod, because when I think of 166th.
Yeah.
There's a perfect spot in my own mind, now I just remembered, there's a stop sign there, too.
Yeah.
So, do we really need one of these where there's a stop sign? The stop sign does part of the job. Maybe it's somewhere between Sterling and the stop sign, that's what I'm just saying, maybe Rod needs to check in on this, maybe another, you know, Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board discussion before we start pushing it out into the community. Cause I just wanna make sure that.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
We don't line them up in places that don't make sense.
Yeah, we can do that, you know, and, and Councilman Albritton, excuse me, Vice Mayor Albrit, Albritton, um, he, I'm sure he has a really good opinion of where he could put it on 1, on 166th, and, you know, in other areas. And there's also Sterling Road.
Right.
You know, that, that's in his area. And there's Sterling Road in, uh, Sunshine Ranches, which is a Speedway, you know, it's only 25 miles an hour.
Yeah.
And it turns into a Speedway.
Sure.
And that's got four stop signs on it.
Yeah.
You know? So, we know the, the effectiveness of the stop sign is not quite what we think it is.
Right.
You know? So, this is a project that I'd like to see moving forward, and it may take us a year, it may take us six months, whatever it is, then we go through the process.
Yeah, great idea.
All right, that was number two. Number three. Okay, we seem to, and, and I'm gonna call on Keith, cause I'm gonna need a little bit of his help on this one. We seem to have, um, a problem with public works utilities, when they're, uh, doing their work and completing their work and finishing it. Um, you, I'm finding, in Rolling Oaks, I'm finding, uh, leftovers from the jobs, uh, laying around, sod tore up, asphalt chewed up, um, I gotta call Andy to get it fixed. Um, when we were running around, Bob and I were running around putting up signs and taking down signs, and you go down a lot of streets that you haven't been down in years, and you see, uh, places tore up for a water line, or, uh, uh, an underground cable, or something like that, that crossed the street, and it's now, the street now looks like it's, uh, from a third world country, or something like that. And so, um, I've asked Keith to work on an ordinance that we could possibly put together. Um, some of you may have seen a rough draft on that, I don't, I'm not sure yet who's seen what. Um, to put it together, uh, that has specific guidelines that all vendors would have to meet, meaning FPNL, uh, Sunrise, Cooper City, Water Systems, uh, AT&amp;T, Comcast, you know, et cetera. And, did I leave anybody out, or? Um, but anyway, very specific things, and, and they're, the big thing is that where they would not be able to, um, turn on their service until they've completed the project, and the town signed off on it, and something like that. And Keith, do you wanna add?
Yeah, I, I think you, you did an excellent job of articulating what you and I have spoken about for several weeks now.
Yeah.
As the town grows, and, and in FPNL, and even the cable communications companies, um, are really protected under federal law, so there's only so much we can do directly with them. Um, there is an existing law, I spoke to, uh, Councilmember Hartman about this week concerning regulations that we do have over the cable companies, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to have this for the other public utilities. You have Cooper City, um, Sunrise, and Pines in some places, who have run, uh, either sanitary sewer or water lines throughout the town. Um, while under Rod's helm, it's a, been a much better situation, um, what has happened is that a lot of times, lines go in, residents don't know that lines are going in, so they're not given the opportunity to connect if they wanted to. Residents who wanna make major expenditures on, uh, developing lines, want a, uh, code means to get repayment, um, for their expenditure, which has happened way back, you all remember Sessa did it, and, you know, countless others, um, so, but it's not codified in our code on, on how that works. And, um, the biggest problem that I, that I have seen, it's actually twofold, that, uh, the former Vice Mayor saw even on my own stream, is that, um, when a line is run, and, uh, there's not as much regulation as we would want to where the placement would go, what other improvements would go, it ends up costing the town, you know, heavily in the future. Let me give you some examples. I want this town to have the ability to determine if it wants a hydrant on a street, okay, if a line is there. They're much more reliable than a fire well. Um, it requires not our testing that we, you know, pay for in order to take care of, and we should have the ability, if we wanna fire hydrant, to say, if, if you're putting this line in for Mrs. Jones, we wanna fire hydrant within this street at whatever location. Um, currently, we don't have the power to do that, you know, under our, our code. So, while Sunrise, Cooper City, Pines are making cost plus 25% on our residents, we are not be able to dictate to them what we wanna see to benefit the community in, in the future, and that's a problem. Two, deals with contractors and restoration of right-ofways and swales after they've done their work. So, they've done their work, and in a regular sense, uh, Sunrise, um, for example, is not supposed to turn on the water, you know, without the town's consent, because we're left there with a half-completed job, and the resident has water, and the contractor walks away. Rod didn't believe me, I don't think, until this week, Rod, that they actually do turn on the water without our consent on a continual basis. And once they do that, the resident is saying, "Well, why do I wanna pay now, you know, X amount of dollars to refinish this roadway? I have my water, hopefully no one will notice this, and, and it will just go away." So, we want provisions in the code that will stop that from happening in the future, to basically say to the utilities, "You cannot close your permit out. You cannot give this resident service until such time as our roads are restored, our right-ofway is made whole, and we accept this job, and, and then, at that point, you're given the right to turn it over to the resident." Uh, and then Councilmember Jablonsky, um, added this week, um, cause we've been going back and forth for quite some time, language that basically says that if they do not come into compliance, the municipality can tell Sunrise, Cooper City, whoever it is, that to disconnect the service until this resident comes into compliance, because our roadways are, are terrible. So, um, one of the biggest factors when, when bringing this issue to light is the fact that we wanted the residents to get formal notice of the fact that a line was going into their street, that some, another resident was doing it, as I mentioned before, in case they wanna connect, but not only if they wanna connect, but also so that they could understand what the work was that's gonna be going on in their street, and they're not surprised when they see it. In addition to that, Councilmember Jablonsky added, uh, language in there, that if it crosses in front of a property, they have to put a, a tap, a connection point. Russell knows the fancy name from, from meetings on this. Um, but, um, that they have to actually pre-design the line, so that in the future, if a neighbor wants to connect, they just tap right in, rather than having to redo the entire process, opening up a tap and doing it all over again. So, to make a very long story short, and something that we've been working on for weeks, there's a lot of things that the town has not done to regulate the public utilities that are making money within the town, and it's time that the town takes some control over the process and, and be able to determine what it wants to see in the field. And so, the final thing that Councilmember Jablonsky added, cause he loved it from Cooper City, is that Cooper City comes before this council and says, "We would like to put in a line at this location, and you all have to approve it." He felt that that should occur for, uh, all the public utilities, so that you all would be able to see at a quick meeting like we, we do, uh, where that line is going, how it's being installed, making sure that the residents have been notified, and that you as a council are okay with the location, because it's your property that they're going in, they're ripping up your right-ofway. So, there's a lot in this ordinance, but all it does is give you all as the council full protection over, uh, future installations within the town. So, uh, Councilmember, hopefully I hit everything that, uh, we, we just now said.
Yeah, I, and I just, I just wanna add a few things, there's, you know, there's things coming up in the future of our town, you know, I'll probably be dead, okay? But, you know, the whole, uh, septic-to-sewer situation that everybody's been talking about, you know, that, that's probably a long ways off, but we need to prepare now and have a, a, a procedure or something in place whenever that unfortunate rule, or whatever, what do you wanna, procedure hits our town, cause it is eventually gonna, gonna do it. And I, I think, I'm trying to be proactive with it now and go forward with it, and I've asked Russell to, uh, after tonight's meeting, to make sure you guys get the preliminary final copy of everything that we had, and we can go over it, line item by line item, change things, add things, move things around, um, for December, January, you know, something to that effect. So, that, that, that's kinda where that's at, you know?
Yeah, I have something far simpler to add that we were looking at this week, but within the same domain of, of issues. So, we've had a neighbor that has, had contacted me in August on Comcast issues. Basically, Comcast took down wires for whatever reason, just left them laying over their barn, along the backyard, along the right-ofways in people's yards. And I was working with Russell, because he's got the contact with Comcast, and we were getting nowhere. Resident is calling Comcast regularly. Coming to find out this week, when, a quick conversation with Keith, it, we actually covered, those are code enforcement violations. If the contractor, and I don't know how broadly this applies, Keith, but if, if the utility does not finish the job, they put the wire in, but they never cleaned up their mess. And I just had a new wire put in today. And the guy who did the work left pieces of wire down by the road, the, the, the insulation that he stripped just ended there. In my mind, the last part of the job, like when I was a carpenter, is clean up your mess, then go home. But they don't seem to care about that. And it sounds like we're covered, Keith, for Comcast, for shoddy workmanship. How far does that extend?
So, uh, the issue that you're.
Under current law?
Under your current law, you're protected under the cable providers, uh, including AT&amp;T, Comcast, all of the like, that's currently set.
Okay.
FPNL has a different set of regulations under both state and federal law, um, but you're fully provided for that issue. We could go out and cite Comcast tomorrow.
Okay. So, I guess the moral of the story is, these are code enforcement violation issues. So, there were things you'd wanna either have the resident report to Julio, or you can report on your own. Just wanted to bring that up, because this has been out there for four months. These poor people, well, you know, first they didn't even know it was low voltage, and These poor people, well, you know, first they didn't even know it was low voltage, and then when they did, they were less concerned, but then it was, how do I get this done? And we couldn't get it done, but code probably could have gotten done in a shorter amount of time. So, and thank you for your help, Russell. They finally got it done, but we have a fast path, I guess.
Yeah, we have a lot of situations when I'm walking up and down 178, I'm usually on, walking up and down the side that has the power, and it had, I can always tell when AT&amp;T or Comcast come through because I'm picking up the black tie straps, but the big ones, the heavy-duty ones, pieces and the ends and the clips, they're there by the, I could fill bags of them if I wanted to, you know, on stuff like that. So it's a, you know, it's not, it's, I don't think it's how we want to run a town.
Right.
You know?
Right.
And this is going to help, you know, hopefully clarify and straighten out and codify what's supposed to happen. So I want you guys to all, to get that, look at it, chew on it, we'll talk about it in December, possibly get it ready for January first reading or something to that effect.
Yeah, I did get a preliminary copy of it and read through it earlier, and I think the idea is right on target. I think that this is, whether we like it or not, it's just the nature of where we are and where the world is going, that one day we're going to need to really deal with this in a large way, better to get all our ducks in a row up front. The one thing that I was concerned about as I read through it was, like, the definition talked about all those different utilities that we were talking about, but then the body of the document or the proposed ordinance was really all about the water lines. And so I feel like there's a lot more information that's not in there that would be applied to the other utilities that may not be in there, or, and I'm not an expert in it, so I can't say what's missing, but I saw this, you know, it's going to, it was going to cover these five type utilities, and then virtually the whole body of it was just about the one utility, water.
Mayor, if I may just address that quickly, as I mentioned before, the other utilities, Comcast, all those governed by the FCC are federally protected, so that's in a different ordinance that we already have. So what this really covers, even though we write everything to, where we say if law doesn't allow otherwise, is water, sewer, and people don't believe me now, but gas, because at some point, people are going to want gas run throughout the town.
Right.
So those are the three things that it's really geared.
We've got a table issue here.
Well.
Sorry.
So, sorry, Mayor, so those are really the three things that it does govern, but we wrote it broadly in case we can ever use it to our advantage.
Yeah, well, and so like gas, I didn't see anything about that in there. I just think, so you mentioned January, I think this is a big deal. I think it's a critical deal, I think it's important, I don't want to, I want to make sure that, I don't know if we need to bring in some, you know, like we did with the communication ordinance, we actually brought in an expert that has written these, that type of ordinance. I don't know if we need to do that for this one, because I just, but I just feel like this is a big deal. This is going to greatly impact our town going forward.
And to add, to add to everything, in Rolling Oaks right now, they're doing all the underground.
Yeah.
And it's, they're all over the place in Rolling Oaks, Moss Tech, and they're running stuff all through the right of ways, they're digging, channeling up stuff, it's, they're moving it in phases, and so I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if that, I mean, that's FPNL, so can they, do we have regulation? Would that be a part of this or not?
We have another, the other ordinance regulates FPNL as well, this would doubly regulate them, so we could have an argument under this as well.
Yeah, so I just, I think we're headed exactly the right direction, I think you hit the nail on the head, I just think it's bigger than what I saw, what I read in the preliminary, I think there's a lot more to it.
There's more, there's more that we added in the last 48 hours, 24 hours, that you'll see where there's like, if you don't do this, you can't turn the water on, or you can't.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it covers all the different utilities.
I agree.
That's my major thing, because I didn't see that in there yet, so I'm sure it's coming.
Yeah, that's why we need to look at it, chew on it.
Yep.
I understand what you're looking for, and what I may do is take the aspects of the other ordinance that's already in place and add it to this one so that it's all codified in one location, so that you can see everything.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And I think that will help.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it'll help, I really believe this will help protect the town in the future. Like I said, I probably, I'll probably be long gone by then, but, you know, when most of it's used, but, and, but it will definitely take us into the 22nd century and, you know, do it properly is really what I'm after. And on that note, congratulations, Vice Mayor Albritton, I'm out of gas.
You had a lot of gas tonight.
I had a lot of gas tonight.
Okay, thanks. Just, Keith, a question on Gary's topic of the underground utilities and water particularly. I know Broward County is going gung ho with their whole Water Advisory Board and, you know, the county level activities to further regulate. Is anybody lobbying or watching that on our behalf to make sure that they're not, without us knowing, legislating against well and septic tank?
It would come from the state level, it really couldn't come from Broward County level.
Okay.
You know, we know the septic tank is coming, all right, every single legislative session it is, you know, proposed. So, you know, at some point that is coming, we have to prepare for it. We don't monitor that as far as I know, Russell, that particular board, because it mainly deals with active public utilities. So, you know, so Sunrise, Cooper City, Davie, et cetera, but we could always keep a track of it for you and find out what's going on.
I just, I just kind of worry that if we're not watching, they're going to catch up with us, or they're going to do things that are contrary to our interest. And I mean, our county representative was chairing that for the longest time, and we never heard a word from him about it until we started asking questions, so it concerns me that things may change. And if you're saying it has to come from the state level, I know we do, we do a good job there, but it worries me what the county's doing, and we're not, we may not be aware.
Okay, thank you. All right, so as well, I want to extend condolences to Andy, Melissa and their family over the death of Melissa's father. I mean, I know Andy's going through trying times, so again, thoughts and prayers go out to Andy and family. I have some good news for the folks that live over in Jim's neighborhood, I think he got the same note as I got today. The Christmas tree backhoe, thank you Rod, was finally moved today. Immediately we get an email from Gloria saying, thank you, thank you, thank you. So I don't know the circumstances behind it, but I know we started asking, so whatever you did to make that happen, Rod, kudos. If it wasn't you, kudos to whoever did, but I know you did. The idea of no construction on weekends that Mary Ann brought up, I want to think more about that, but I like the idea, however, I'm not sure how you want to implement that.
It's practical.
Yeah, well, there is a practical side. I mean, when I was building my house, I started work, I didn't quit work until 2:00 in the morning. Weren't many houses around me at the time, so nobody was complaining, but I don't know the rightful end there, if that's something we can do. It makes sense, but at the same time.
Yeah, but if you're, my concern would be is if you're doing it yourself.
Yeah.
Most people, the weekend is the only time they got it.
Right, right.
You know?
But also, general contractors will bid on the project based on a timeline, and don't generally include nights and weekends, closed and off and all that sort of thing. So my worry would be, people are absorbing higher costs now. Maybe we need limits for it to end at a certain time, so we're not getting dump trucks pulling up at 9:00 at night. I have seen that on my own street, for example, but I'm not sure where to go with this. Maybe we.
It just warrants further discussion. The sliding scale on the Level 3 permits, I like that idea as well, I guess we'll talk about that when it comes to the Drainage Committee. Now, the one thing she did bring up that I've always thought is in law right now is, you've got an open permit, I thought you have to have a permit post out front. So if that's the case and people do not have it out there, is that a code enforcement violation then Julio, or a building department issue? It's code, so maybe as your team is riding up and down the roads, maybe that's something we want to be more proactive. If there's obvious construction going on and there's no permit post out there, that's a problem. Nobody knows what's going on. So again, something else for us to look at. We talked about the LPR project, I wanted to get that out there. All right, so I want to spend a couple of minutes talking about, I guess, some things I've learned from residents over the last four months. You know, you learn a lot when you stand there saying, my name is Bob Hartman, here's my platform, what do you think? You get a lot of feedback back, which is excellent, there's no other way to put it, because Steve, you and I have talked about the benefit of campaigning, you reengage, you reestablish the values and your understanding of the values of the community, and they do change. You know, four years ago, there were fewer people building the big mansions we have around town, and it was kind of interesting at the farmer's market, so I met a couple of the people that are building them, and they have a different perspective. Now, we're not going to change our town based on a few large houses going up, but those people deserve to provide input like everybody else does, and it should be considered. So, you know, at the end of the day, from being out there for several months, I got hit with a question last week after the election, now that you're elected, how do you plan on keeping us rural? Okay, so, you know, I campaigned on it for four months, I campaigned on it four years ago, I think we're all like-minded, and I think we have all been saying the same thing for years, and there's nothing Bob exclusively can do, we have to do it as a team. This is, this is a council responsibility to keep us rural since we were, you know, we've all campaigned on it and we're all like-minded. Four years ago or so, we started on strategic planning, we were really looking at the big picture. Two years ago, I believe Anna Coldice helped us with the most recent strategic planning exercise, and I think that went very well. In my mind, we're at the tactical level now. We need to, as we did two years ago, as soon as the new council was, the new council members were elected, we put an ordinance in place that is going to put a halt on some of the increased density. If you recall, the two acre, you can't, you can't do one acre if you're surrounded by two acre, two acre or more, or whatever it is, you've got to go to the lowest density zoning. There are more ideas, there are other things we can do to keep us rural, to keep our spaces open, to reinforce, you know, the lifestyle that we want to maintain here, keeping animals. Keith and I had a conversation earlier this week, so I'm looking for some ideas, and this, what I guess the bottom line is here is, like Gary has proposed, I think we want to put some workshops out there, guys. And one might be, let's solicit some ideas on what the residents think rural means, because I'll tell you something, somebody who's thrown up a $7 million home has a much different idea of what's rural than somebody who's got, you know, half a dozen horses, a couple of cows and a couple of goats and sheep. I mean, right off the bat, one of the people I spoke to who's building a lovely home over in Sunshine Ranches was just complaining about the condition of our roads, and they, they're building a house on one of our newer roads that was done probably five or six years ago with Tisdor. They drive high-end cars, they don't like bumps in the road. The rest of the neighborhood probably couldn't care, but their idea of rural is a nice big wall around their property so they don't have to look out, they like the idea of animals, but they want better roads, and, you know, the guy also said, when are you going to put sewers in? And I said, there's no discussion on that sort of thing. So, you know, the point is that my idea of rural is different than that person's idea, and I think it's a good time to really solicit input from the community. Maybe a Saturday workshop where we can get as many people here as possible after the holidays to just say, what does rural mean to you? And we do a listening session, and out of that, you know, what, one of the things Keith had mentioned that I thought was a good idea is, maybe, and I'm not talking on the commercial ag side for somebody who has an ag classification, but we have a lot of residents that have half a dozen horses, a dozen horses. That's part of our rural lifestyle, we talk about the equestrian lifestyle. Can we give them some sort of a tax break on their barn, okay, to keep them engaged with their animal activities, with their equestrian activities? You know, you don't have to be making a nickel off of it to look for a break, but that's just one idea that Keith tossed my way, there may be other ones out there, to really put our money where our mouth is in terms of fostering our lifestyle, supporting our lifestyle and allowing it to continue. So some other areas other than the keep us rural, which of course was really one of the things that I think, I think in most of our, the other part about keeping us rural, people would walk up to me, they didn't need to see anything more on my shirt, I agree with your, what you want, unique lifestyle, keeping us rural, that's why we're here. Nobody, and I said this during the last election, came up to me and said, we need more commercial, we need another Walmart, we need another Publix, it's all about keeping things the way they are. But now, another piece that came up quite a bit was taxes, because people don't understand ad valorem versus the fees and everything else, so I spent a lot of time explaining. People, for the most part, understand what's going on with the fees related to fire and related to trash. A lot of the feedback I got back on trash was kind of interesting, because I only had a few people that were concerned about the price increases, and they were generally people with more, more white or as much white as I have in my beard, and it's all about fixed income at that point. But most people, the feedback I got was, well, we paid very low for a long time, we expected an increase at some point, because if we were underpaying, we were going to come to market at some point, and I think we're there, and I think that's a reasonable explanation based on, you know, the whole selection process the town went through. But I didn't get any complaints about our garbage service since we switched in October. Everybody's very happy with the service, so kudos to the administration on getting that all lined up. But back to taxes for a minute, I, you know, I'd like to see us do more in some of these areas, but I think Emil's department runs the process properly, we are informed throughout the process, I think their vetting process for the budget all makes sense. You know, if things pop up, I liked your comment before on the LPRs and any of these other more discretionary type items, I agree, they should go, we should have vetting, the community should understand, even if it is non, you know, tax money, we have accountability to the community on how that money is spent. So I'm not so, I'm not concerned at all on how we handle our budgeting and our taxation and our revenue side of the organization, as well as how things are handled from, you know, how we spend. Total transparency there, and, you know, Emil, you had pretty big shoes to fill, and I think you've done an excellent job, so, you know, the feedback I got, no real complaints about ad valorem, because people respect the fact that we, the council, have been trying to manage how, you know, the town spends its money, and of course, that all reflects positively back on you and really the entire administration, but particularly the Finance Department. So really, no changes there. Public safety, though, is another major part that feedback came back through. And I think where my eyes really opened was back about three months ago, when we had the vehicle burglaries over in Sunshine Ranches, there was the Channel 10 article about what was going on up there, it got a lot of people in Sunshine Ranches concerned, then I started to hear from other people scattered around town, because we do have, I'll call it petty crime, you know, car burglaries, theft of things off of the front lawn, some of them are expensive, you know, sometimes when ATCs and side-by-sides get stolen, those are $10, $15,000, but they're not violent crimes, they're not, those are the things I've always been concerned with. However, when I start talking, when I would go, you know, one or two questions deeper, well, you know, for us to add an additional police officer to the daily schedule is going to cost X. And then the answers I got back from a couple of people actually in your neighborhood, Gary, is that, well, what is my daughter's life worth? What is my family's security worth? And I'm not here to say we need to increase, you know, our spending with Davie, that's probably the worst-case scenario. But I have had conversation with Andy that I want to follow up once he's back. We keep hearing at the state and federal level, there's more money for law enforcement, more money for law enforcement. I think every politician way upstream from us ran on something that said, we need more to combat crime. We need to, you know, take a page out of Emily's book.
Tap into it.
And, yeah, get some money there, because if we can pay for additional law enforcement on the state or the federal dole for the next three years, I mean, and we can get some more police officers out here, the bad guys tend to dry up when you have more police officers. I'm not suggesting that's a long-term solution, but it gives us time to bring in some other options, and if it's, you know, slowly an increase in the amount of Davie PD presence we have, we'll figure that out, but I really think we need to get on this soon, because there's concern out there. I mean, like I said, it was all over the national elections, the state elections, we've been hearing about it from our own residents, so that's an area that I would like to see us perhaps have one of us pick up the mantle of public safety. I mean, Jim did such a great job, I would nominate the Vice Mayor in a minute, but, you know, if one of us takes ownership of that and takes the bull by the horns with Andy, and certainly we can all help out. But, you know, to get us additional resources to bring in additional police force. us additional resources to bring in additional police force, I think the town will dramatically benefit. And, and people will see that we're not just saying, "Oh, yeah, no problem. We'll do more." I mean, I, I love all the incremental things we're doing, but I think we need a little bit more of a boost on actual police protection. So, I would recommend that we start those discussions on our own without perhaps additional citizen input to get it kicked off, particularly if there's federal or state funds out there. But then, you know, to, to, what, what happened with, with Jim and, and the residents mostly geared towards, you know, it was a lot of it was geared towards traffic and speeding. I'd like to see that about crime prevention as well. I mean, we've talked already. We had the chief here last month. He talked about citizens crime, uh, citizens police academy. We talked about the volunteer, I, I can't think of the name of the, the group we used to have here. It's not coming to mind, but the volunteer.
Citizens on Patrol.
There you go. Citizens on Patrol, COP. You know, those kinds of things, even if we had two running around town on weekends, there's more presence there than just Davy PD, and it augments it. All right. So, we'll continue to, I'll, I'll keep bringing those guys up. Code enforcement was also a big topic. You know, the, the first people to scream about code enforcement are the violators, because they're usually, you know, actively engaged with code enforcement. But I also heard comments from people about, you know, "Why don't they do this? Why don't they do that?" And every single time, I was explaining to people that we have very limited proactive. The town's made a decision a long time ago to be reactive. If there's any changes in that, I think we need a lot of resident support, because we don't want to just start enforcing codes across town like Pines does or Weston does. I, I also, it was kind of interesting. I met some people over the campaign season. One guy works as a code enforcement officer in Pines. He basically was a plantation cop for 28 years, I think he said. And when he retired from that, he became code enforcement over there, because it's a natural for law enforcement folks. When I said to him, "Well, what's the posture of Pembroke Pines?" Well, we aggressively enforce code. So, immediately it was, "Well, I like the idea of having a team that's part of the police department, although we have a different option." I'm not suggesting in any way that the way we're doing is a bad idea, because we've been doing it this way for 21 years, and it seems to be successful. But I do think we ought to take a look at a couple of things. I think last month's meeting over in Jim's area with the Green Meadows, Deems Ranches, Ivanhoe, HOA, do you have that new name yet?
Not yet. Working on it.
That group was doing a lot of, they were questioning code enforcement. I hate to say it, but they were kind of bashing code enforcement. And Steve, you did a great job explaining it, because honestly, even though I've sat through tons of, of meetings, of the special magistrate meetings, when they were all on Zoom, I don't fully understand the process, and I should after 21 years living here and coming to meetings. But I haven't had code out to my house, but once or twice in my life. So, I don't know how it works unless I call Julio. Now, I don't know whether we want to have some workshops to explain to the community how it works, workshops to get feedback on it, workshop, and I keep saying workshops, because it's ASO, maybe it's like Gary was suggesting, a half hour before a meeting. Maybe we do it on the schedule for the next several months, whatever that works out to be. But we have to, we as the town need to do a little better job communicating it. And I don't know whether that communication starts with the closing on a property through the property praiser's office. Don't dump. You know, we send a note out to every new property. But in any case, I think code enforcement probably gets a bad rap, because, you know, nobody, everybody wants to blame the cop when they get pulled over for a speeding ticket, but who was speeding? Everybody wants to blame code enforcement when they get cited for a code enforcement violation, but whose violation is it? I think people need to understand a little bit better about how our code operates, that they're being fair, that they're following the law, and that regardless of how we deploy it, whether we continue with the same model, we adopt it as part of our police contract, or we create, you know, create an internal department. Again, I'm not checking in on any of those. They all should be discussed. But at the end of the day, our residents need to know more about it, because they don't. And, you know, they, there's a bad taste with a lot of people when code shows up, and they have no idea why. So, it's understandable. All right. And, you know, my whole point behind all of these workshops and things is you look at how many people are here. And I appreciate you all being here, but I wish there were 10 times as many folks. And I know people also watch us on, on YouTube, which is fantastic. But we need the feedback from the community on these things. We heard some information about how we should deal with some of these things differently tonight from Mary Ann. The last Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board, very similar. You know, this is how resident, residents were giving us input on, on their feelings, how things need to work. Input, once you've gotten cited by code, is probably not the best form of input. Let's talk about it. Let's bring these things up. Let's bring them back to the council. I know any one of us would listen to anybody from the community who's got some ideas on these things. We all pick up our phone. We all return our phone calls. So, if you do have any ideas in the short term on this, please, please call your council member or call me. I'll, I'll be happy to discuss it with you. On the other hand, I think we ought to actively solicit feedback on these items, because, again, I just heard it. In two years, there'll be three people hearing it. And then in another four years, if I haven't done anything to try to help fix it, you'll be talking to a new guy up here. And that's never been mine or any of our intentions. We take resident feedback seriously, and we make the changes based on, on their ideas. So, so I think that's all I have. Of course, my pearls of wisdom from campaigning will come out over the next few months, because I, I just didn't want to overwhelm everybody, and I know we've got a huge agenda ahead of us tonight. So, thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Bob. David?
Thank you. Hi. Thank you, everybody, for coming out, and hi, everybody in YouTube land. Want to first begin with my condolences to Andy and Melissa, and your great loss to your family. I've been through the loss of my father, and it's painful, and I don't think a day goes by that I wish I could have a moment to ask my father a question about something. Moving on, Gary, I, I do like the idea about creating an ordinance on drainage. Great, great, great idea with the sliding scale for level feet, three permits. I support something exactly like that. I think it's a great idea. Moving on with the speeding issue, the, the speed signs, the radar with speed on there is a great idea. However, I think that the signs should, at, at a certain level, just flag slow down, because I, I drive on the Gratney every day to work, and they have signs there that the sign, I mean, if you go fast enough, I've seen it over 100 miles an hour. So, I think we, it hits a point saying, "Slow down." I think that's, would be more productive for our town, because you may find others with means of trying to see how fast they can go for the signs. So, that is something for us to think about in the future. But as for speeding, I, I just rattled off eight streets when I was thinking about this. I have Joel Goldmacher on Appaloosa, who has complained to me about speeding. Bob and Judy Parker complaining about the speeding on Mustang Trail. Jim, Jim on Lou Ray, Tim Starkweather on Lou Ray, who had the police in front of his homes.
We could put them on all of those.
Huh?
We could put them on all of those.
All right. I'm just saying that it's, it's really bad in Sunshine Ranches.
And this addresses it.
Now, I, I have a couple of questions for Keith here, that regarding the utilities issue, one of my neighbors, Dr. Espinoza on Mustang, had expressed an interest to me about wanting to put in a, a water line through, it's a sunrise. But she want, she says she has no, no problem upfronting the money, but she would like to recoup that money back from residents as they tap into that line. What's the, what's the town's policy?
So, we've always allowed it, going back literally to when the town first formed. The first time ever was actually with Johnny Sessa, when he ran the line down Hancock Road, and everyone started attaching on Hancock. I spoke to his daughter years later. It took like 20 years for him to repay back, but he eventually did. We've always allowed it, but it's never been codified in the code, and that's what this ordinance does. It has a specific section to actually codify it. For Espinoza, they've hired legal counsel, and I've been working with their legal counsel on drafting a formal agreement, which is what he wanted to have with the town to basically state the process of how they'd be repaid, which is the exact process that's outlined within the ordinance as well. So, we are working with them, because I know they have a very far run, and they're willing to spend the money to do it. They just want to make sure that over time, like Sessa, that they could get paid back.
And, and the follow-up with that, regarding the septic tanks issue, would it, is it possible that the state could impose a regulation on our town that forces our residents to pay a fee to hook up to a sewer line?
Hundred percent.
Wow. That's something we need to really watch out for.
It, it's going to happen, because of the leakage of the septic tanks into the groundwater and the water pollution caused by septic tanks. It's not a secret. It is going to happen. We've dodged bullets year after year.
Came close a couple of years ago.
Did. That's what I was thinking. It lost by a few votes.
Right.
But it is going to happen soon.
Yeah, the whole problem with it, though, is they're, they're using a sledgehammer where a ball peen hammer is needed. Most of the issues were upstate, where they were contaminating the, the springs, like Wakiva River and that whole area. And then they've got the same problem in the Keys. I don't know how we're contaminating groundwater here, since we go down 50 feet or 150 feet for ours. So, I mean, I get it. I understand why they're trying to do it, but I just would love if we could get a carve-out. And in the other cities that, you know, follow best management practices, so, something to think about.
Interesting statistic. There's over 2.3 million septic tanks in Florida.
Where'd you, where'd you read that one?
In one of the reports.
Okay.
In one of those reports we were throwing about two or three years ago. That's.
Oh, okay. Got it.
That's what they said. And it's only increased.
Yeah.
Wow.
It's a lot.
All right. Thanks. Moving on. Now, with the time change, I've asked Andy and code enforcement to be a little more proactive on enforcing the dark skies ordinance. That's one of our keep, keep it rural, keep us rural ordinances, because, you know, keep it dark, that's the way we want it. So, he said they were going to be moving forward with that. Bob, I like the idea of giving some tax breaks to certain barns and things to help advance protection of the equestrian community. That's really, really important. And with the LPRs, I think Russell's going to give us an update on where we are with the LPRs. Once again, that if we can keep the record of license plates as they come in, we can put a little quash, a little damper on this property theft that's been plaguing our town recently. And George came up here and talked about the farmer's mark, or the carnival. Now, I, I have one thing that we, I noticed the last time we had the carnival, is after the carnival was over, the equipment, the, the rides and things were sitting out there for a couple of weeks after the carnival. And I, I would like to have something, if we're going to be, we're going to be doing this here, that we can have some kind of restriction, how soon they have to pull that equipment off of our property. It's, I don't want it to be sitting out there as a free parking place. That's, plus, we're going to be having the farmer's market the following weekend.
Right.
Couldn't we put that in the contract with them?
I think so.
You know, if they have some here.
Yeah.
All right. Speaking of farmer's market, I came to a, a great idea, and Andy and the vendors working on this, is that we can have some kind of presentation, something we could put, like a banner or something, on each of the vendors from the town, saying, "This is a Southwest Ranches vendor at the farmer's market." So, it would signify how they're contributing to it, as opposed to all of the outside vendors coming in here. But when they see somebody that's local, you know, our neighbors will patronize those vendors a little bit more than somebody from out of town. That's just my feeling on that. I mean, you see Josh Dyke's out there selling honey. I mean, I would buy, my honey's kind of full right now, but when I'm out, I'm definitely going to be buying from Josh. Now, during the advisory boards, there was, most of the advisory boards have been asked, "Does anybody feel like they don't want to be on the advisory board in an upcoming year?" And not one person I've heard say that they were stepping down. And, you know, I kind of got a feeling I think we need to keep them that way. I know there's a couple of people that had some confrontations, but, you know, for the, for the bigger picture, the contributions from our advisory board members have been important to our town in keeping us rural, in keeping it rural. And then I'm going to wrap up with the rancher. Everybody got the rancher. Last page has these maps for the recycling and the garbage pickup. I couldn't read it. I asked, I said, "Susan, can you, can you tell me, read one of these streets?" And she says, "You're right, David. There, there was a problem." But Susan worked really hard. She is going to improve the map, and there's going to be something inside that's going to happen month over which day each neighborhood is going to have their garbage and bulk picked up. So, it's something that Susan was working on.
Just a question on that topic for Russell. What happened to the G.I.S.?
I was going to provide an update on that tonight.
Okay. Perfect. That's supposed to replace these.
Oh, all right. Great. Well, I'm going to pass it on to Vice Mayor Albrecht.
Thank you, Dave. I, I have about five items. That's all. It won't take long. First of all, I would also like to offer my condolences to the Rapkin family and to the Burns family, Melissa for her father, and Andy for his father-in-law. And our prayers are with you. And we, you know, we wish you the best. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate Bob Hartman and ex-vice mayor Gary Jabonski for their reelection. I am very proud that the town voted to keep them in. I, not just because I sit on this council, but I'm very happy that we work together and things get along. We may not see eye to eye, but the old saying, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." Well, I think they did the right thing and kept everybody in. So, congratulations. Third, the Baco is gone, and I'm not going to rain on Rod's parade, but Rod was not really the one that brought the rain down on everybody. There was a phone call made, and it was to China or to India. The owner, the, the whole conglomerate of the company, when I spoke to him, was in India. They gave me the local dealership that used to have that machine, and that local dealership looked up the owner of that machine, and the owner of that machine's phone number was not correct. So, due to some very due diligence and great investigation by our town attorney, Mr. Polyakov, they found the owner of the machine, and he was called. His brother loaned that machine to a friend of his, and that's where it sits. That machine is gone today. The other machine that was last year got decorated with Christmas decorations. This one got decorated with Halloween decorations, and, but it is now gone. The people were dancing in the street. They called me on the phone and, and told me that they were dancing in the street. I told them, "Send me some pictures." So, that worked out real good. I have a street just south of Sterling Road on 166. It's a private road. Been working with the residents for close to two years. They came to us and said, "How do we go about getting this repaved?" And I'm going to tell you what, with the town's help, with the attorneys, with Russell, with Andy's help and all, through holding the money for them and working with Weekly, they got that paved last Friday. So, that private road now is a paved road for them. Their kids can ride their bicycles. It was absolutely to the point before where you couldn't drive your car down it without the front end getting knocked out. But because it was a private road, it wasn't part of our Tisdor project, but they all chipped in. All 16 residents paid their portion of it, and they have a brand-new road. So, I was real happy to see that take place. The Green Meadows projects that are underway is only affecting about eight or 10 homes. They've been notified. That's going east to west and west to east, connecting the structures that are already there back towards Dyke Road. And then in the future, there's a major project coming up in Green Meadows that goes south, and it'll go down to the huge canal on the south side of Sterling Road, one block in. It'll all drain that way. But all those residents that'll be affected there will be notified. We're doing a real good job, I think, of starting to notify the residents, letting them know what's happening and what's coming up, and what to expect, so they don't get, you know, blindsided. And hopefully, that project won't take as long as this other one took. So, you know, that's a good thing. And hopefully that project won't take as long as this other one took. So, you know, that's a good thing. The Green Meadows Civic Association, we're working real hard to put that together. We've had a Zoom meeting after Zoom meeting after Zoom meeting. Haven't come up with a name yet. We're working on that. There's a couple of names that we can't use because of possible liabilities from the past, but we're working on it. And once we get together, it was suggested that we meet at individual homes. And I'm not real sure that that's a good idea, not with the COVID going around. Town Hall's available. And I'm trying to get in touch with the Sikh organization there on Sterling and Dyke. Great organization with the town. They work with us. They have a bunch of meeting rooms there. Maybe we can meet there, you know, one night a month. We meet on the fourth Monday of the month, the last Monday of the month. And so we are working on that real hard. And lastly, Bob, if I do win the lottery, okay, I will put more police on, okay? If I win that billion-dollar lottery, we'll have more coding, I mean, more police, more crime, more everything. I'll hire a couple of new officers, all right?
You got that?
You heard that, right? All right. I got it.
That sounds like a verbal contract.
That's it. I swear. And lastly, I'd like to say thank you for putting your trust in me as Vice Mayor. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, Jim. Yeah, I've got a few things as well. Also, wanted to pass on my condolences to Andy and Melissa and their family. Obviously, a very difficult time. Appreciate, you know, all he does for our town. And Russell, I appreciate all you've done while he's been out of town so he can focus on the family and do those things that are truly important. And so thank you for your work and for all the staff kind of filling in while he's been working on other issues. But our condolences go to him and Melissa, of course, and the family. Congratulations to our new Vice Mayor. Awesome. And congratulations to the reelection of Gary and Bob. I just wanted to say a word that, you know, both these guys, all the council, but just to focus on these two guys for a second. The time and the effort that they both put in goes so far beyond what is required for this job. And it's because they both, you know, love this community. They live in this community. And they, you know, long before they were on the council, they gave to this community. And so it's just natural for them to continue to do so. I'm honored to serve alongside of both of you. Just do an amazing job. And it's great to work in a council where we all have different opinions. We have different ways of doing things. Occasionally, we'll disagree on some things. But at the heart of things, we all recognize that the residents rule and that the rural lifestyle is why we chose this as our home. And to preserve it is what it's all about. So congratulations to both of you. I'm thrilled that you're both going to be here for four more years. I wanted to mention that there was some varying conversations or communications related to the fireworks and animals workshop to be able to work through, you know, kind of cross-pollinate ideas. There was different dates that were out there. We're now set for our council meeting in December. It's going to be at 6:30 on December 8. And I just want to make sure we're all clear. So we'll have an expert here. We're going to have a veterinarian here to kind of give some expert advice on how to do it. But we've got a ton of people that have been dealing with this for a lot of years. And I want to make sure everybody knows that this is a workshop. This is, I'm looking for kind of a cross-pollination of ideas between our residents that have been doing this and kind of working through it for a long time. I think there's a wealth of knowledge in our town that we can all share and learn from. So I'm really looking forward to that. And I think that it's going to be a really important event as we all prepare for New Year's and, you know, the fireworks that I'm sure will be coming at that particular point in time. I wanted to touch on, from an election standpoint, we also had three charter amendments that were, we voted on. All three were approved. Really, all three were approved overwhelmingly, which is awesome. And so just to kind of go over those really briefly, we had the, we changed the resident requirement for mayor so that you need to be a resident for four years. I think that's important.
Ninety percent approval on that.
Yeah, yeah, ninety percent approval. And I think that gets right back to our rural lifestyle, to be honest with you. You can't walk into this town and really understand the root of what that's all about in, you know, one year, two years. So that was awesome. The, filling the council vacancies, that also passed overwhelmingly. I don't think, I think it was like in the high 80s if I remember right. And so that puts in a good process. I had some issues with it. But overall, it definitely was a good process. And, you know, it's important that it passed because frankly, our previous process, frankly, just, we found that it doesn't work. We can't even stick to it. So this was critical. Glad to see that pass. And then the last one was that our Charter Review Committee previously was every four years. Now it'll be every 10 years. Of course, we can do it more often if we like, but we're required to do it once every 10 years. So, yeah.
I think, I had to explain that probably more than the other two.
Yeah.
Because people thought we were taking away the responsibility from the residents. And then, you know, anybody can bring it up to us anytime. We can put it on any ballot.
Yeah.
But I still think people felt like we were removing citizen rights with that. Not sure if it wasn't clearly written enough or I wasn't explaining it properly, but...
No, it's interesting you mention that because I also had similar conversations where people, you know, actually, a couple of them, after the election, I had conversations with them and they voted against it. And I was like, "Why did you vote against it?" And they, right along the lines of what you were saying, they felt like, well, you don't want the input of the residents. And that's not what it was all about. So I think it just, yeah, it may be, you know, just a lesson for forward. We might have been able to word that one a little better. But fortunately, all three passed. I think it's a great improvement to our charter. And we'll move forward with that. I wanted to mention that the tax break for the barns, I really like that idea. I'm not sure that barns per se is it, but a tax, looking at some sort of a tax break to give some benefit to those farms, equestrian-type, you know, activities. You know, we talked, going back to, you know, the strategic planning session we had. One of the big debates that we had, the conversations we had for a long period of time, was, you know, to be more proactive in our rural lifestyle. In the past, we've been mostly protecting, you know, trying to fend off things that would, you know, take away our rural lifestyle. And I think this idea is one of the things that we can do to be, actually be more proactive and promote our rural lifestyle so that we get a little bit more on the offensive to keep it there as opposed to just always playing defense, you know. So I like that. And let's see, I guess the only other thing, the vendors, the idea about kind of designating Southwest Ranches vendors, good idea. I think we would want to run that by our vendor that puts the whole event together. Make sure that they're good with it. And I don't want to offend our other vendors, I guess, is what I'm saying. I think it's going well. It's a good deal. I don't want to create. And I do think a lot of us know who the locals are.
We do.
We know them pretty well.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, but I get the idea. And if there's a good way to do it, I like it. And with that, I think I'm good. All right. So, legal comments?
Sure, Mayor. Like everyone here, my thoughts and prayers are with the Rapkin and Burns family on the passing of Mitchell Rapkin. And I hope that the fond memories that Melissa, Andy, his mother-in-law Sharon, and the rest of their families have of him will help them through this difficult time. I want to congratulate, obviously, the reelection of the council. So it's been wonderful working with you all for the first four years and now going on to another four years. And I hope everyone in the town has a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. And I know I, for one, is thankful for the governance of the town over the last, you know, four years and look forward to the future that it holds. So other than that, Mayor, no further legal comments.
Great. Thank you, Keith. Russell, administrative comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to also extend my condolences to Melissa and to Andy on the passing of Mitchell Rapkin. Melissa's fault. I also wanted to take a moment to thank staff for working cohesively during this time. As I've, you know, been split doing different things, I wouldn't have been able to do some of those things unless staff came together and really everybody came together and been working really hard. So I wanted to thank them for that as well. I also wanted to provide a couple of updates. First is on the GIS layers that we are working towards for the solid waste bulk and the recycling efforts. So we've been working with our consultant and our GIS team, that's internal staff team. And we're very close to having that GIS layer. We had to work out some additional complexities as it related to the different dates and the different zones and how to make that the most clear. And we've worked on different overlays and the opacity of the layers. So we've been working on some geeky details that hopefully at the end result will be to everyone's satisfaction. So we hope to roll that out. I'm an optimist, so I'd like to say the end of this week, but I don't want to oversell, so I'll just say very soon. But very soon we should have that. And the functionality that that will have that will be very useful is that a resident will be able to put that in, put their address in and be able to determine not only, you know, clearly what district they're in and who their representative is, but also what day their solid waste collection will take place, what day their bulk will take place, and also what day they're recycling. So it'd be very clear. They won't have to interpret what the map says just by placing their address and they'll know exactly what the information is for every day for the next year. And every year we'll update that accordingly. Okay? So we are very close on that. I also wanted to give an update on Crown Castle. So our broadband project to bring, I'm sorry, fiber to Town Hall, not broadband, we already have that. So we're bringing fiber to Town Hall through an ARPA project. And we're very close on that. That's been run from the right-of-way, which is Griffin Road. And the fiber network has been run to Town Hall. So we're just waiting on some equipment, some splicing to take place. And probably by next week, we'll be experiencing super, super-fast download speeds here at Town Hall. That will increase all of our functionality, our productivity here internally. So looking forward to that project. And then lastly, the project du jour that everybody's talking about is the LPRs. Very happy to say that we have five locations, six locations that have passed, well, I should say, five locations that have passed electrical inspection and now need to be inspected by FPNL so that they can basically turn the meter on and power those cameras up so that we should see those in operation. I would say by, again, I don't want to be too optimistic. I'll just say next week. But we'll have six locations that are actually fully functioning by, I would say, by next week. We have three other locations that have been those problematic locations that we've had to either work with Davie on, the one that's on 148th by the Waffle House location over there. That one is actually in the town of Davie, so there's some coordination efforts that need to take place there. We're still working on that. But all of the poles are in all of the locations except for Griffin Road and 127th. We're working on a solar option potentially there. We're working out some logistics there. And we also needed to coordinate with the county on the revocable license agreements there. So that one's still not there. And also the Marvin Lane location, which is the privately funded location, we're still working through some issues there. FPNL has to do some boring there that's a little bit different than what was initially projected. But the poles and the equipment are on all of those other locations. We're just pending some other electrical inspections and then FPNL inspection. So we're making, you know, very good progress. And like I said, I think by next week, we'll have six of those, six of the ones from this project fully functional by next week.
Hey, Russell, one thing to note, just so the council knows and for the public. Rick Spear, who actually luckily lives on my street on Marvin Lane, all he wanted was an LPR. So he went door-to-door to every resident and said, "If you're all in, we can all make this happen as a street." And there's only like 10 homes on our street. So we all paid, I think it was like $2,500. It actually increased a little bit because FPNL had that change order. But I want to make sure the residents know that if they want that extra security, you know, bigger streets, not a huge amount if you can get 20 residents to agree to put in their own camera. So I just want to mention that to everyone.
Yeah, good.
Good. Russell, I did have a question for you. I don't know if you saw the email that was sent to us all earlier about some damage on the LPR over Rolling Oaks. So the claim there, and I don't know, I don't know the details. I haven't been out to see it myself. But the claim is the landscape company did whatever damage. Plastic conduit coming up out of the ground may not be the best idea in retrospect.
Right.
Did we use steel coming out of the ground on the rest of them throughout town? Or are they all, you know, plastic conduit coming up?
Off the top of my head, I'm sorry. I don't know the answer to that. We can look into that. I'm not quite sure.
Well, that, stuff's going to happen. I'm used to pejorative, but stuff happens. And if it isn't a landscape company, it's going to be somebody head-on into the pole, you know, damage occurring. How are we going to manage that?
Well, we've always, you know, anticipated that there was going to be some type of maintenance, right? I mean, even steel could be bent if there's a car barreling into it. So obviously, those things will be repaired as necessary. And just like we have with any other thing that's in our right-of-way, if someone is liable for that damage, we will certainly seek, you know, compensation from their insurance carrier to restore that.
Okay.
We're aware of the conduit in that location and we are working on getting a quote to get that fixed. We want to utilize the same company that actually put it in to begin with, which is the company we're working on now. To me, it's functional. It's working. That's not the highest priority as far as getting the rest of the cameras up and running. So I'm getting a quote from them to do that. But, you know, the highest priority is to get every other camera up and running first.
There's a channel that FPNL uses when they run power from underground, like from my house, out to the pole. They run it up to the transformer up top just so the landscape guys don't hit it and fry themselves with, you know, 220 service coming in. Maybe that's something we want to look at to protect this stuff from the inevitable. It's not going to stop a car accident, of course. But maintenance around those poles, whether it's a landscaper or it's a resident, using a weed whacker is eventually going to work their way through the conduit there. It's going to cost us more money, so maybe it's something we can think about as we do any kind of phase two. And Emil, Emil, you may want to think about a new line item for maintenance and repairs on these LPRs because it seems like it's going to be a recurring item. Good. Thank you, Russell.
You're welcome.
Russell, are you?
I'm done. Yes, thank you.
Awesome. All right, great. All right. Well, how about we begin our meeting then, huh?
Yeah.
Let's talk about some ordinances. All right. So the first ordinance that we've got here is item number nine.
That's being tabled, correct?
Correct. It is. I wanted to, before somebody makes the motion to table it, I just wanted to make a comment. I don't think we need to read it in or anything. Or do we? No, I didn't think so. So, but one of the things a resident brought to my attention that I thought was a great point, and I'm sure this will come up when we have our workshop, and that's why we're tabling this, because we really want resident input on this. But the ordinance really puts loose dogs and vicious dogs in the same category. And I don't think that's, you know, that was brought to my attention. And frankly, I had seen it, but it was more impactful when it was brought to my attention. And I think we need to make sure that, though, those are not the same situations.
That's exactly something that really raised big concern with me.
Okay.
Being an owner of three dogs, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I mean, those are two clearly different situations. So we want to make sure that they are handled differently. All right. So...
So Mayor, because of the fact that we don't know exactly when this will come back, I suggest you just pull it and we'll re-advertise it, meaning re-notice it whenever you guys want it back on the...
Perfect. Okay. So we need to table it. We'll just pull it. Okay.
We need a motion to pull it?
I mean, the mayor has the discretion, but if you'd like one for the record, it's fine.
I'm fine to just pull it.
You're in charge.
I'm fine.
That's why he's mayor.
All right. So item number 10.
So Mayor, the way that this agenda is set up, which is different than your previous ones, is because 90% of the items are the engineering contracts that we've spoken about for forever now. for forever now, which just gives you the wish list of engineers that you can use for town projects. And then item 20, I'm going to ask you to pull it because there's some mistakes in it that I have to cure that I saw tonight. And then 21 is the budget, sorry, is the fiscal year-end budget. 22 is the meeting calendar. And, sorry, that's on 22 and 23 is the holiday calendar for the town. So at this point in time, because the town staff wanted to not have to read in 400 engineering resolutions, they put it on this consent agenda. But if you want any of the items pulled for discussion, pull them now and then those will be pulled out of the consent agenda.
Okay, so you're recommend, you're recommending 20?
20 be removed completely. We'll put it back on the December agenda-
Okay.
...with your consent.
Any other items to be pulled?
I'd like to see item 21 and item 23 pulled, put for tonight.
To be discussed.
Yeah, to be discussed separately.
Yeah, 21 and 23.
Okay, so we'll pull 20, 21, 23. Any other items that council would like to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll just pull those three.
So there would just be a motion to approve the consent agenda, less items 20, 21, 23, and technically 25. And then, because 25 is adjourned. And if there's a motion to that effect, you can ask the public if there's anything they want to hear on, and then you would just approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, less item 20, 21, 23, and 25.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second on that. All right. Before we vote on that, I want to open it up to the public to see if there was any items that they wanted to discuss specifically that is on the consent agenda and has not been pulled. Do we have any? Yeah, go ahead. No.
Noel Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. On number 10, on line number five of it, ubiquitous?
Ubiquitous.
Yes. Has someone been reading that new-fangled instrument called the dictionary? That is the first time that word has been used before this council in 22 years.
We're learning and growing.
Can you explain it?
And I'd like to know, how many up there know the definition? Uh-oh, I got some dumb looks now.
I can't quote the definition, but I know what it is.
Where's he at?
Okay.
No, it's in the header. I did it to mess with everyone.
On everything else, I'm going to have to take your expertise on this because it's got to be greater than mine on these engineering contracts. Because I tried taking a look at them. And I tried turning it upside down, tried turning it on its side, and it still was Greek to me. So anyway, it's all up to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment closed. Okay. Final, any comments from council on the consent agenda? Seeing none. Okay.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Mayor, on item 20, I would just ask for you to pull it. The contract that was attached, which I actually hadn't seen, was an assignment. It included an exhibit, which was actually the SEPY agreement as an attachment to the assignment. And it wasn't attached to the agenda. And as a result, I feel legally, it needs to be coming back with a complete package. So I would just ask you just to pull it and we'll put it on the next agenda.
You want to table it for, let's table it to the next agenda.
That's fine. Then we'll read it in.
Yeah, do that.
You want a motion to table?
But read it in and then table it, please.
What?
They're going to read it in first.
Oh.
Yeah.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, assigning the town's planning, zoning, and land use services to Trans Systems Corporation, DBA Trans Systems Corporation consultants, as a result of its acquisition of SEPY Engineering and Construction Incorporated, or to such other legal entity employing Jeff Cadems, authorizing the mayor, the town administrator, and the town attorney to execute an assignment, if necessary, and providing for an effective date.
So we'll table this to-
Motion to table is till December?
December 8.
December 8.
Correct.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I think David did.
Okay, great. Thank you, David. All right. Can you please call the, call the motion?
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablons, uh-
Jablonsky?
Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion pulled. Item pulled.
Tabled.
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 Okay, and then item 21?
Correct. Mayor, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving a year-end budget adjustment for fiscal year 21, 22 budget and providing for an effective date.
Great. Amel, do you have comments on this item?
None whatsoever. I just wanted to clarify for the record that this does not imply in any way, shape, or form that the town's budget is out of balance or in a deficit. This is pretty much standard requirement that we need to do as there are certain projections on each department that happens to the benefit of the town. And just to cite an example, as the C money would put 20 grand for the scholarship amount, we ended up receiving 20, I mean, $43,000. So this is just standard process that happens and we need to, for Florida statutory reasons and auditing purposes, we need to make sure that those departments are in balance. Additionally to that, there's some costs that were actually budgeted that are essentially cost recovery basis. So we budgeted a cost for building, for example, and due to the high constructions and permits, we ended up receiving more revenue. But then the short for, the end short for of that was essentially that the cost that was budgeted then went up higher, which is balancing pretty much a department.
Right. So it's just the natural kind of given flow of the finances as it works out. Great. So I think we need a motion and a second on this?
Yeah, I just want to explain myself first.
Yeah, go ahead.
I asked this to be pulled because I just wanted everybody to note that this is last year's budget and it is another surplus of $752,000, which to me, as I say every year, this is year number 13 for me of a surplus budget that due to our good management team and the way we operate up here, you know, everybody is frugal with the town money and it's spent wisely. And this is, this is proof of that.
Absolutely.
For like the 13th year in a row. And this is like, this is three quarters of a million dollars.
Yeah.
So it did not disappear and-
Just because we got it.
And go anywhere, right? And on that note, I'll make a motion to approve.
Great. Thank you, Gary.
I did have a question before we go much further.
Can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
And this is, this goes to legal, so Keith.
I hear you.
Yep, yep. So I thought we had budgeted, sorry, I thought we had budgeted a larger amount last year to cover the Pines' legal challenges.
You did. It was, it was not, all that money was not utilized. It was put back into reserves.
Okay.
So I think he's just pulling it out from his reserves and pulling it out of his reserves in the process.
You could, you could certainly state it like that. The way it works is that we have money from the year before. We appropriate that amount into next year. And that happens every year. On that Exhibit A, if you look at one of the line items, it actually lists appropriated amount of $750,000-
Right.
...or 750 plus. And of that gets an offset of the excess of this year. If we happen to do not use it and council during the budget process decides to continue to allocate or appropriate that amount into next year, we continue to do so at your discretion.
Okay. So the money was appropriated. We didn't use it. It went back into reserves. Now we're pulling it back to cover the difference?
Not necessarily. It was already appropriated into the department's budget, but it just happens that it was higher than the amount that we have budgeted, even though the amount was allocated to it. So let's say in this particular case, we budgeted $525,000 for the department.
Mm-hmm.
That included the appropriated portion that was pulled from the year before, but that was not enough.
Okay.
So then, an appropriated amount in excess to that comes from that previous year. It just based on the estimate that the town attorney's actually had at that point in time.
Sure, sure.
But just to, I mean, I just want to just state that for the record that due to the due diligence and the work that the town attorney actually performed, we were to secure that $340,000 for the settlement, which if we look into that Exhibit A, we utilizing a portion of that, $162,000, to offset that rather than going back and use appropriated fund balance.
Got it, got it. Clear. Thank you. I remembered we had allocated additional money. I just was wondering where this came in and now I understand.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, good. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments from the council? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on the item?
Zip.
Seeing none. All right, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Perfect. And then, item number 23?
Yes, Mayor. A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the town holiday schedule for the calendar year 2023 and providing an effective date.
I first want to comment why I wanted this one pulled. We have a new holiday in here. I just wanted to, in the guise of full transparency here, there's a new holiday on our books here. So instead of 12 calendar days, it's going to be 13 calendar days that applies to our staff. And the new holiday is Juneteenth Day, which was on June 16th, which we will formally recognize. And I just wanted to make sure it's out there-
Good.
...that we weren't trying to push it under the rug or, you know-
Should be celebrated.
-bury it in a hole or, you know, whatever, you know.
Right.
So, and on that vein, I make a motion to accept it, approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item from council? Seeing none. Is there any public discussion on the item? Seeing none. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item number 25?
Item 25, motion to adjourn.
Awesome. Great. Thank you all for coming out. Appreciate it.